It is 5:30. We will call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Meister?
Present.
Councilmember Belgium?
Present.
Councilmember Wyrock?
Present.
Mayor Carrillo?
Present.
Mayor Flores?
Present. We'll now go into oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the City Council on any matter scheduled for closed session. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. Anyone? No? Nobody on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the closed session items.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are six items before you this evening in closed session. The first being pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.95, liability claim. Claimant Patricia Vasquez. Agency claimed against City of Porterville. Item two is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.95, liability claim. Claimant Darlita Swerengen. Agency claimed against City of Porterville. Item three is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation, Enrique Martinez versus Jorge Solis Echeveste et al., Tulare County Superior Court case number PCU 301118. Number four is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation, Jimmy Sanchez versus City of Porterville Unified School District et al., Tulare County Superior Court case number PCU 307301. Item five is Government Code Section 54956.9D3, conference with legal counsel. Anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case in which facts are not yet known to potential plaintiff. And last is item six, Government Code Section 54956.9D4, conference with legal counsel. Anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, two cases.
Thank you. It is 5:31. We will now go into closed session.
It is six thirty five. We will reconvene open session and report on reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item to report. On item number one, claim by Patricia Vazquez and a motion by Councilmember Wyrock seconded by Vice Mayor Carrillo and a five zero vote. That claim was denied. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on and I'll invite you to please stand if you would for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Meister. Remain standing for an invocation or moment of silence.
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone that would like to come and do the invocation? Join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Moving right along for the employee of the month, Lori Hallick. Would you please come forward? Lori Hallick has been selected as the City of Porterville Employee of the Month for June two thousand twenty four. Lori began her career with the city as a recreational leader for Parks and Leisure Services in the after-school program, where she was a basketball coach from February two thousand to two thousand two. Then in December two thousand fifteen, she returned as a clerical two in the field services division and went on to promote to the position of clerical three in the refuse division. In February two thousand twenty, Lori promoted to administrative assistant and joined the community development department. Most recently, in February two thousand twenty four, she joined the administration department as the executive assistant in the city manager's office. Lori was raised in Porterville and graduated from Porterville High School. She has a bachelor of arts from Cal State University Fullerton. Lori always has a great attitude and provides exceptional customer service to anyone who calls the city manager's office. She consistently goes above and beyond in her role, efficiently managing schedules, coordinating meetings, and ensuring the office runs smoothly. Her positive attitude and willingness to assist with any task, no matter how big or small, has earned her the admiration and respect of her colleagues. Does that get you a parking spot with your name on it? Throughout her day, Lori interacts with many departments, directors, and city council members, and provides exceptional service, always with a smile. When she is not serving the city of Porterville, Lori enjoys spending time with her family, baking, planning parties for families and friends, going to concerts and traveling. Lori has been happily married to her husband Ben for three years and has an adorable son, Oliver. Lori's goals are to continue to build her skill set and knowledge of city and municipal government functions and looks forward to continuing to work alongside her teammates. Lori is known for collaborative spirit, consistently going above and beyond to support the team. Her proactive approach and exceptional customer service are evident in her daily work, which is why she was chosen as the employee of the month. Please join me in congratulating her. Please join me in congratulating the June two thousand twenty-four Employee of the Month Lori Hallick.
This is always so nerve-wracking. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for Patrice and to Jason and the whole Administration Department. It's been so much fun getting to know this new department and still working with my other teammates at ComDev as well and the whole city, the council. Thank you guys so much.
And that's your husband back there, right? That's your husband. Thank you so much. That is wonderful. There you go. All right. We'll now move on to oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items not scheduled for public hearing at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. You will be asked to state your name and city of residence for the record. Once again, we will continue to adhere to the three-minute-per-speaker time period so we can continue in an orderly fashion, proceed with decision-making responsibilities. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Please do so.
Brock Neely, address on record. Fernando? What you're receiving is part of the U.S. Code, four U.S. Code, Chapter One, the flag. This is all the regulations concerning the United States' flag, how it's supposed to be handled, how it's supposed to be flown, how it's supposed to be disposed of, things you can't do to the flag, like for instance subsection three, which you'll see is highlighted. All these flags you see, they see, say, Trump twenty twenty-four on them, those are actually unlawful. Anything that you print on a U.S. flag is unlawful. You're not supposed to desecrate it whatsoever. The other thing is, okay, where'd it go? Under subsection eight, under respect of the flag, you'll see highlighted that the flag should never be displayed with the Union down except as a signal of dire distress in instances of extreme danger to the life or property. It's usually reserved for the military, for when they're being overrun by the enemy, not for things like this. For a person that claims to be a patriot, he does not know how to observe the true respect of our flag. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Please do so now. You can bring it down.
Hi. My name is Elizabeth. I've lived on Main Street since two thousand sixteen, and I have no problem with what, I have no problem with what any people, with what other people do. But the problem I do have is I grew up in this town. My husband was born and raised here until he passed, and when he did, I had to learn to grow up and take care of myself. And I have lived on Main Street since two thousand sixteen, and the only problem that I have is that I don't care what these people do. It's none of my business. I have my own problems. But with the problem I do have, I do have, excuse me, is they like to make a mess, but they don't like to clean up a mess. And I broke in my shoulder, broken my wrist, broken my shoulder, broken my wrist. But, you know, and these, some of these people that I see around here, their hands aren't broken, their legs aren't broken, but they can make all the mess in the world, and then they say, oh, well, somebody will clean it up. Well, yes, somebody's gonna clean it up. But what about them? They need to clean up their own mess, just like we clean up, we have to clean up our mess that we make. Well, why in the world doesn't people, authority people, make them clean up their mess? Now, I live at the Glenwood on Main Street, and right there on the corner of Main and Oak Street, there was somebody that made a mess and made him a little, in the little cubby hole by H&R Block, they made their, they made him a little house or whatever. And on Sunday morning, when I came out, after I had went to church, I came out. They were not there, but there was all kinds of stuff. Monday morning, when I came out, they were asleep there. They had all kinds of, all kinds of stuff was there. Somebody cleaned up that mess, took it all up out of there, put it on, put it right by the lamp pole right there. Oh, well, the city's gonna come out and take it. You mind your own business, okay?
You have thirty seconds to summarize.
Anyway, so my point is, they came and cleaned it up, or they claimed and cleaned it out, but it has been there since yesterday morning. And that make, that make, that makes Main Street look trashy, and that's what I don't really like. If I could do stuff myself, I would, but now I am limited to certain things that I can do. So, but like I said, it was made on the thirty-first of May, and since yesterday morning, about ten o'clock.
Elizabeth, thank you. Please leave your contact information with city staff.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so now for oral communications. Do we have anyone on virtually?
Yes, Your Honor, it appears that we do. I can go ahead and bring them in now.
Okay, please let that person come in. Have them state their name for the city of residence.
Okay, got it. Hi, this is Kathy Capone, Porterville, California. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So I wanted to comment on number twenty-three, acceptance grant deed by donation. I could not, I'm sure it's in the packet. It's just, I don't know what page it's on. It's difficult to find. But I'm looking at the streets noted, and I believe that is very low-lying land, which is in the river corridor. I'm really glad that it's being donated to the city, and I hope that you will carefully consider the uses that will be allowed there because of the, because it's low-lying land in the river corridor. It's not, in my estimation, a good location for any housing. Could be a good location for the Tuy River Parkway. Other thing about low-lying land in a river corridor is that the wider we can leave the river corridor, the more floodwaters the corridor can hold. If we reduce the width of the river corridor, it decreases the capacity for the natural absorption and storage of high water levels. So please carefully consider the safety of the area when you allow development there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar. All items removed from the consent calendar for further discussion will be heard at the end of scheduled matters. All right, looking at the consent calendar, we have items one through twenty-five. If there are no noted conflicts or any. I apologize, twenty-seven. I needed to go one more page. Thank you. I'm glad you, I'm glad you guys are up here. All right, items one through twenty-seven, if there are no noted conflicts or any items to be polled or any discussion, how does council wish to proceed?
If I may, I would like to thank the staff for putting together a great package for us and the time that they spent with probably most of us up here reviewing these items. So with that said, if there's no items to be polled, I'd like to make a recommendation, a motion to accept items one through twenty-seven on the consent calendar.
We have motion.
Second.
And a second. No further discussion. Call for the vote. Passage unanimous, five-zero. Thank you. We'll move on. Mr. Tree, are you kidding me on the time? Okay, well, we'll now move, we'll now move on to scheduled matters.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first scheduled matter before you this evening is a consideration of proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget and setting of date for public hearing. Consistent with the city charter, the city manager must submit, for consideration by the city council, a proposed budget for this fiscal year, being twenty-four, twenty-five. Section fifty-one of the city charter provides that the city manager shall provide, not later than thirty days before the end of the city's fiscal year, an estimate of expenditures and revenues of the city departments for the ensuing year. The budget message presented with the draft document is provided in your packets, and this emphasizes the significant projects and factors involved in the budget's development and composition, and recommends periodic review of budget targets and the revision of expenditures to meet those targets if necessary. Generally, any overall reduction in fund balances proposed will result in the use of accumulated monies for capital, I'm sorry, in a reduction of fund balances proposed will result in the use of accumulated monies for capital expenditures in the implementation of projects. The city charter provides that after duly considering the estimate and making such corrections or modifications thereto, as shall, I'm sorry. Let me start that sentence over. The city charter provides that after duly considering the estimate and making such corrections or modifications thereto, as shall seem advisable to it, the council shall by resolution adopt a general budget, and such resolution shall operate as an appropriation of funds to the amounts for the purposes set forth in the budget so adopted. All spending authority for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget will expire after June thirtieth. Therefore, a new budget must be adopted, which allows payroll to be paid and routine expenditures to be incurred effective July one. The charter is not specific as to the duration of adoption. Thus, accordingly, consistent with past council discussions, the council may authorize a budget adoption period less than a full fiscal year. At its special meeting on May fourteenth in review and determination of its priority projects for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, the council did affirm its priority projects as presented, and those were identified as the new library facility, streets improvements, that, considering Main Street, Villa Street, Union Street, Henderson Avenue, Morton Avenue, and Castle Avenue, the tertiary treatment facilities, Fourth Street Community Center and Park, Sirius Accident Review Team, that's the SART recommendations for Fire Department, the sports complex baseball field, the Henry Street Park, the skate park shade structure and lighting, and the shade structure has been completed. The lighting is forthcoming. State Route sixty-five and one ninety community welcome sign, and the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding. Streets projects were also identified to be designed in this year, and those include Date Avenue, Plano to Park Street at seventy-five thousand and Main to Plano at three hundred thousand. The Henderson Avenue J to Second Street for seven hundred and fifty thousand, Lime Street, Henderson Avenue to Mulberry, Orange Avenue, Main to Date at three hundred thousand. West North Grand, Rose to Main Street for one million, Morton Avenue at five hundred and fifty thousand, Olive Avenue Gateway improvements, Reed realignment at nine hundred thousand, Scranton, Westwood, West Worth of realignment at one point four million, and Union Avenue at eight hundred and forty-one thousand. And then the streets projects that were identified and with those expected to be constructed this year include the Grand Avenue reconstruction, and that's Fourth to Plano for three point eight five million. Main Street, Putnam to Olive at one point six. Main Street left turn safety turn lane, that's at Main Street and North Grand and Reed, and that's at two million. Montgomery Avenue J to H at one point six five million. Olive Avenue Safety Median, that's Beverly to Maston, and that's two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Putnam Avenue at Elderwood, and that's curb gutter sidewalk for pedestrian connectivity to Westwood at Thurman, that's one point one million, and Villa Street is thirteen point two million. In addition, the city performed streets maintenance program was considered this evening during consent and was just approved by the council, and that has a budget of two point nine million. In additionally, the proposed budget before you this evening includes the relaunching of the city's managed transit operation as it brings it back in-house. On December fifth, the council will recall that it authorized the withdrawal effective June thirtieth from the Tulare County Regional Transit Agency, also known as TCRTA. This effort to withdraw from TCRTA has taken extensive staff time and resources. The city council will consider proposals derived from a request for proposal that was authorized by the city council on April sixteenth. Staff has utilized regional market data to develop a conservative budget to fund the operation and capital expenditures for the transit division. Due to the complexity of the withdrawal from TCRTA and the city's relaunching of the in-house managed transit operation, it is anticipated that through the contracting process that the budget will be able to be refined as we go on. Transit is funded with federal, state, and local Measure R transportation funds. And additionally, another focus of the council has been on homelessness, and that continues to be a focus for city staff. On April sixteenth, the city council adopted ordinance nineteen oh five, which regulates unsafe and unauthorized camping and storage of personal property, protection of critical infrastructure, and mitigation of harm to the public's health, safety, and welfare. The enforcement of the ordinance will require additional personnel, as has been discussed with the council, and this will be added to the Police Department and the Parks and Leisure Services Department. Staff is proposing that the Special Methods and Resource Team, also known as the SMART team. It has been very effective in providing resources and responding to calls, and it is proposed that we increase that team. And that would be to add a new patrol lieutenant at a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. This includes salary and benefits and equipping, I believe. Police sergeant at a hundred and fifteen thousand, a police officer at ninety-six thousand, and a community service officer at eighty-two thousand, and those are proposed to be funded by Measure I. And then to complete the cleanup effort associated with ordinance nineteen oh five, the Parks and Leisure Services Department has requested the creation of a new full-time encampment maintenance worker at ninety-two thousand and for part-time encampment maintenance aides at seventeen dollars an hour, which would be funded through the general fund. And so with that, I am happy to go over the executive summary that was provided in the packet, or we can answer questions that the council may have on the various sections of the budget. So however, the council would like to proceed.
Thank you, Patrice, for this. I want to say thank you for the information that you've provided for us and for Janie, for all this work that you've done, countless hours, countless hours, and we appreciate it. Okay, council, I know that each of us have looked at it. Councilmember Beltran, did you have any? Councilmember Beltran, did you have any comment or any questions?
No questions. This is a comment of the overall look of it is, we went, reviewed it a few weeks ago. It's just well-balanced, and I appreciate how we're continuing the conservative approach of the Budget Stabilization Reserve, the Catastrophic and Emergency Reserve Fund. Just, I think, just great job in the Finance Department of managing all the flow of this, of the funding. So between public safety, the parks, you know, the pools, all the lists that you had just gone over. Just a well-balanced approach. You know, we always hear about roads, and you know, there's significant improvement in that area. So just great job for all the staff and departments that are working. It's a well-balanced budget there. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselmember Wyrock?
I'd like to echo Councilmember Beltran's comments. Together, the staff provided great information for us to consider. I believe it's the highest and best use of the funds. Our city's really on the move, and a lot of great things are happening because of the financial stewardship of the departments, even not even spending all of their budget this current fiscal year and having some reserves to add to the next fiscal year. Really appreciate the stewardship of those leaders and those agencies. I like seeing that there's some studies going on for improved bicycle and pedestrian access, some ADA improvements. You know, a lot of us, we, I think every, just about everybody in town, we work hard, and we like to relax when we can relax, and to see the amounts in there for Parks and Leisure Services is great. Other than that, you know, it's very detailed. Love the budget, love the information that was shared with us. And I do appreciate the comment that, about the transit, and that the budget is, will be refined as we go along. So there may be additional costs that we talked about, and the council's here to fully support, I believe, any kind of additions that we might need to keep it flowing well for our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselmember Meister?
Well, once again, I'd echo Councilmember Wyrock and Beltran with the stewardship and the great work that's being done. We know that we are economically coming across some hard times, and we're adapting to that. And so I appreciate seeing that in this. And then just tonight, we had someone come in and speak about the homeless and the trash on the street. And in this budget, we are, we are taking action as far as hiring more officers and a new full-time encampment maintenance worker with four part-time positions, which is greatly going to benefit this community. And then just fantastic seeing the millions of dollars into roads that we're investing into our community and looking forward to the future in this. So great job to all of you. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, also, I want to say thank you to the Finance Department, the City Manager's Office, and all the departments who, as we were reviewing earlier today, the agenda and questions. You know, the staff was clear that they're able to do this because the departments are experts in their field. So because of that, we're able to put together good programs, good budgets, and take care of the city. And I feel that in just hearing the summary about the budget and everything that's being put into it for the year to come, I just appreciate the additional support to the departments that we need in our city. I think that it's showing how the need is evolving, I guess, around the things that we're dealing with, but also trying to improve our city. And I think that additional support goes forward to the departments, and then that in turn goes towards the safety and resources to our city. So I feel very comfortable with everything that we've been talking about, and also that's presented in the packet.
Thank you. Since being seated on council in two thousand and sixteen and years after, the city of Porterville has always been fiscally responsible, and it goes to each of the departments and all of the stresses. And when we talk about what is in the budget, it's transparent. All the information, everything that is done, they've done an amazing job. And for those of us that we share on the audit team for the audit committee, having a AAA, you know, says something for everyone. So I applaud and I commend you. And with that being said, I believe we need to go in the direction that we are with the budget, and that we, I make the motion that we schedule the public hearing for... What date is that? July eighteenth? June eighteenth? For June eighteenth? No further discussion. Call for the vote. Passes unanimous, five-zero. Moving right along.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I'm looking at Mr. Tree. Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. The last scheduled matter before you this evening is a consideration of draft resolution concerning the identification of critical infrastructure, and Ms. Calderon will be presenting the staff report.
Good evening. So the city, as you know, is preparing to implement the city's new ordinance, nineteen oh five, regulating unsafe camping, which repeals the Article seven of Chapter eighteen, Sections eighteen through seventeen and eighteen through eighty-three of the Porterville Municipal Code, and replacing it with Chapter eighteen, Article seven, which regulates unsafe and unauthorized camping and storage of personal property, protection of critical infrastructure, and mitigation of harm to the public's health, safety, and welfare adopted on April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and effective May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. So as outlined in the ordinance number nineteen oh five, and in regards to the critical infrastructure, the city manager by resolution designates from time to time as being so vital and integral to the operation or functioning of the city or in need of protection that its damage and capacity disruption or destruction would have a debilitating impact on public health, safety, or welfare. So an internal staff committee has been developed to continue with implementing the regulations, designating individuals as roles, developing protocols and forms, and continued coordination with service providers. This committee has updated the list of critical infrastructure presented at the March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four city council meeting, and enforcement will be focused on priority areas set by the city council at its meeting on May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. So those include major corridors where schools are located, such as along Henderson Avenue, Morton Avenue, Olive Avenue, and commercial districts such as the Downtown Zone District, and also waterways. Attached to the staff report are updated maps that reflect quadrant sectors for the city outlining buffer zones identified in the ordinance, a map outlining the prioritization of the examples mentioned above, and is also provided. The enforcement teams will work to obtain voluntary compliance with referral to available services at every single one of the encounters. And so staff here in presents for council's consideration the draft resolution to establish the critical infrastructure where enforcement will take place. The critical infrastructure list is included as Exhibit A to the resolution. So the recommendation here is that the city council approve the draft resolution approving the designation of specified locations as critical infrastructure for purposes of Municipal Code, Chapter eighteen, Article seven. And staff, all the departments are available for any questions there as well.
Thank you, Claudia, for the report. Councilmembers? Councilmember Beltran, you have any comment or any concern to this regard?
No, just well job working with all the different departments because if we look at the list and the intentions of this ordinance, I mean, it's very thorough. There's, it's not a broad stroke. It's, we're trying to be deliberate with the intentions of public safety, but also individual rights. So just job well done.
Counselmember Wyrock?
Just two items. Really appreciate the breakdown of the different sectors that's provided in this document. I think four sectors outlining where the current areas of the critical infrastructure are. There's plenty of space that remains for the homeless population to care for themselves, I guess. I would just like to restate that the safety of all of our staff that are going to be out there face-to-face with the homeless population and that whole dynamic, let's never treat it as a common type of occurrence that we become, and I'm sure we won't, and the training provides so that we don't become complacent at all. Just the safety of our staff is of utmost importance. So anything we can do, if we identify a procedure that we need to tighten up on, please let us know, and we'll do all that we can to, number one, keep our people safe, and number two, care for the homeless population. I appreciate the budget information with adding of the resources. Great, great job. I'm very proud of the staff and the council for, and all the legal support to help us get to this point today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselmember Meister?
Well, I'd say action, action, action. We updated the city no camping ordinance. We've secured the armory for a couple more years, and we continue to take steps to give our law enforcement the tools they need. We just did that tonight, and with the encampment assistance. I'm looking forward to the future and what we can do in this, in this city of Porterville, our home. And we're taking a tactic in the most humane way to handle this. I love Chase's vision that's shared with us in closed session, and I look forward to the future. So thank you all.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I don't have anything additional to add, just that I appreciate the establishment of the internal staff committee because I think that's going to be key in developing all those things, outline the roles, the protocols, and then providing back updates of recommendations and things that they're seeing and dealing with. So no other comment?
I have no other comment but to say thank you for the countless hours spent on this item alone because it's been a lot of work involved, not only with staff, but legal counsel, and I'm sure the hours with the police department and fire and safety. So I just want to say, with all that being said and hearing my colleagues, I want to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the draft resolution of the designation of the specified locations, et cetera, as staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, and we have the motion, the second, no further discussion. Call for the vote. Passes unanimous. Moving right along. Okay, Mr. Tree, honestly. Now we'll go into the AB twelve thirty-four reports. Counselmember Meister, you have the first one. Flag day committee.
Well, flag day is ago, June fourteenth, seven o'clock. We have the jumper secured. He should be hitting the door at seven o'clock. We'll start the National Anthem with Nick Slater. Super excited about this year. We have Dennis Townsend speaking. And it's a great event. We also will be inviting the children to pull the flag down. Fire Department's going to be involved with honor guard, lowering and raising the flag. Police Department working to make sure we're safe and the roads are closed. And we're going to get the children involved pulling the flag out in the street. And overall, it's just a great patriotic event, and really looking forward to it. We have another meeting just before here next week, and just to cross the final Ts and dot the final Is, but looking forward to it and hope to see you out June fourteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next one would be mine, the Tulare County Economic Development. We met on May twenty-second. There were no public comments. The minutes for April two thousand and twenty-four were unanimously approved, as well as the April financial. There was a presentation by Suli Saro of AES. They represent Rexford Solar. They are a storage project for greener, smarter energy solutions. They are a global organization. They're focused on fluent energy, battery storage. They are in every state. They have projects in California, solar, wind, battery. They're focused on developing and delivering innovative, sustainable energy solutions, ways to bring clean air. The Rexford Project Overview. They are located on about three thousand five hundred acres in the southeastern Tulare County, near the town of Ducor. And for more information, you may go onto their website, www.aes.com backslash California. The project and client services updates. There are currently forty-five active projects. That is through May sixteenth. There were four active projects for this month. A broker requests sites for a manufacturing facility looking to relocate to the Central Valley. They are seeking a fifty thousand to one hundred thousand square foot facility, looking to buy, but will consider leasing with a ten-year minimum option. The next one, a supply chain and storage company seeks a twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand square feet temperature-controlled facility. The space will be pivotal to the company's core operation of cold storage with a portion dedicated to distribution activity. Rail and major transportation routes are a must. An advanced technology vehicle manufacturer is looking to expand into California. They are seeking an existing facility of one hundred thousand square feet on forty acres. Sites were selected as an initial screening. A distribution repacking company is seeking expansion in the Central Valley. They are seeking an existing facility on or twenty-eight, twenty-plus acres. Prefer the ninety-nine corridor. Updates. There is an AES site tour, which is this Friday at ten o'clock AM. There were questions with regard to weather conditions to that regard, and there are some people that will be attending, but Porterville will not. It's in Ducor. Highlights were provided on the preliminary work plan sessions, such as the annual work plan priorities, outline of a draft budget. New officers to begin on July first. The chair will be Supervisor Amy Shacklean. Vice Chair, Mr. Clay Ibsen. The Secretary, Donette Carter, remains. The treasurer will be Miguel Ramirez. Past Chair, Brian Pacigian. And Jay Lacy would be an administrative rep. There were, for the year two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five committee chairs. That was tabled to the next meeting because we requested the description of the responsibilities for positions such as the private partner recruitment, the public partner engagement, the special event chair, the nominating chair for potential members. We want to know what that was all about before we said, yeah, we'll volunteer. Susie Picasso Gonzalez of Eagle Mountain Casino will fill the representative seat on the board for the casino. That concludes my report. Our next meeting is June twenty-sixth. Moving right along, Eastern Tulip Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Counselmember Wyrock?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. On Thursday, May twenty-third, the ETGSA had a meeting here at two o'clock to talk about the amended rules and regulations. It was a study session. We opened it up for public comment, at which time we did hear from a representative of the Fryant Water Authority, their attorney, Don Davis. He had a couple of comments that he shared about overpumping and how the agency may be able to develop procedures that might be more beneficial for all parties. He supplied us with an actual printout of Fryant's five-page document of their recommendations for the study session, which the agency gladly accepted. There was no public comments. The study session went through a few different highlights. We had a report from Tom Harder, who's the specialist, the engineer, Tom Harder and Associates, who gave us an overview of some land subsidence, the historical areas where subsidence is occurring, the areas that he perceives will be experiencing greater subsidence in the near future. We talked about the pumping depths that may speed along land subsidence, and the goal really is to limit land subsidence that impacts the community and water delivery systems. I did take a note that he believes that the deep pumping at depths of greater than six hundred feet are having a greater effect on land subsidence than pumping at a lower elevation. There was a recommendation that the deep pumping be considered, and there's some discussion about increasing the meters that are going to be needed throughout the region. There was an interesting comment, and I appreciated our chairperson Supervisor Dennis Townsend's comments at the county. comments at the county of Tulare, is also reviewing their well policies and procedures, and they're trying to become a little bit more inclusive of the needs that are outside of their decision-making, the needs of the greater Tulare County area and the different agencies. I'm sure he'll provide us a staff report at our next meeting, which will occur on Thursday, June 6th, at 2:00 p.m. That's this Thursday, at 2:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. There was a lengthy closed session items, and I don't recall any items discussed in closed session, being presented to the public at large at the conclusion of the closed session. Director Knight, or pardon me, Assistant City Manager Knight, I think he was in attendance. We see you online. Any technical or any other comments that you'd like to share related to the meeting?
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. We did talk about the 11th amended rules and regulations. That was a discussion that came up during the study session with direction to come back this Thursday. So that is a, a hot topic for the group to discuss, and it'll take further discussion on that, to mention the meters that Councilmember Wyrock mentioned, addressing the, the subsidence management zone. So Thomas Harder, as the agency's groundwater hydrologist, is definitely refining some of these details as it goes on to, to cross over into the negotiations with Fryant subsidence on the canal. So there's still some, some heavy work going on, and these details are, are all to follow, and, and those are going to be the, the primary discussion points moving into this Thursday's board meeting. So, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. That's our report. And again, our next meeting is this Thursday at 2:00 here in the council chambers. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The Tulare County Association Sustainable Corridor Committee, Mr. Reidenauer.
Thank you, Mayor Flores. Just been in this meeting on May 30th with Mayor Flores and Assistant City Manager Michael Knight. The items discussed for the city of Porterville, so the Sustainable Corridor Committee discusses beautification and projects along the corridors of the major state routes. So we discussed for Porterville, the Westwood and State Route 190 roundabout, and there will be artwork that is placed there for, for the Mighty 190, as well as the city of Porterville inlaid into that roundabout, as well as a State Route 65 landscaping project that Caltrans designed, and we're moving forward with to get that bid out and get the proper approvals from Caltrans to move forward with that, as well as additional landscaping on State Route 190 west, State Route 65. Now, looking at some screening and landscaping projects there. That's in addition to two welcome signs that, that we discussed for Porterville, which would be the State Route 65 and 190 overpass, to have a, a welcome to, to city of Porterville sign there, as well as at State Route 65 and Westfield. Those are the projects discussed.
Thank you for that. How did you dissect all that information from all those conversations? You did a good job on that.
Thank you, Mayor. There was quite a bit of discussion.
Yeah, there was. Thank you. All right, moving right along into oral communications. Is there anyone that would like to come forward on oral communications? No? Okay. There is? Virtually?
Yes, Your Honor. It appears that we do have one.
Okay. Please let that person in.
Hi, this is Kathy Capone again. I assume that you intend that your meeting have the video of the chamber? It only displayed the agenda, the whole meeting. Now, when Mr. Knight was speaking, his, his video showed for a brief time, but otherwise it was just the agenda showing the whole meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone?
It's always been.
Yeah. Any, any other, any other?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along into other matters. Councilmember Beltran. We're already there.
Light's still outside. Well, thank you. A couple of comments. Just want to, man, digging into this 721 pages. All of you put together, then we get to see the final product. But, very thorough, thank you. I mean, it was a lot of reading. I think that's why I'm starting to wear these now while I'm up here. A lot of reading. But just thank you for all the information. It just helps us make educated, you know, choices. Last weekend was the Memorial Day Ceremony out at Hillcrest, and it was great to see, it's probably been about four or five years ago when I first started helping, seeing some of these older veterans, I mean, just having heat stroke and just, I mean, a lot of these gentlemen are in their 70s, maybe 80s, that were doing this work, and it was just humbling to see so many younger and just a multitude of volunteers from different organizations out there. It was just beautiful to see as a community coming together. And on that note, looking forward to the Flag Day Ceremony and all that, that's, that's kind of expanded. It's really neat to continue to see that, and I'm sure I will be there. There was a comment earlier about kind of a political statement, but thank God for free speech, however way somebody wants to display or communicate that, and that's what that is for. Thank you for staff, for the social media posts, a lot of it either on the committees, job opportunities, public notices. It's really helpful to get the city's information out there for public awareness. Just, I, I see it's being utilized a lot more, and I think that's the go-to for a lot of, especially the younger individuals. Makes it easier, but just been a really great job following even the Parks and Leisures for all the, people are always asking about sports and events, and so just great job for staff on that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyrock.
With Flag Day, is KCR, or K-C-R-A-TV from Fresno, are they going to come? Isn't that the TV station that does our Veterans Day Parade? Have they, do they know that we're doing the Flag Day? It sounds like it's going to be another great celebration.
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that. I doubt it, because Flag Day is a national event, so I, I don't know if Fresno does their own Flag Day. I don't think staff has reached out to anybody like that, and I, I don't believe, I've heard any talk from any of the members in the committee.
I was just curious.
No, it's a great idea, and maybe a good addition.
A lot of, a lot of community pride in our, in our spirit of patriotism. Really appreciate the, the budget and the highest and best use of dollars. There was a radio station comment today that I heard driving about people that sell stuff out of their house. Got a couch for sale, come on by my house, I'll show it to you. And I guess there's been reports of people showing up at people, people's houses. They didn't say it was happening in Fresno, but maybe elsewhere in the country. And the stranger comes into the house, and then you never know what's going to happen. And, you know, and, and there's lots of things. Maybe you put the couch in your garage, and your garage door's up, and some stranger pulls in, and you meet him in the garage, and then what happens? And there was just some discussion about a, a safe place, a safe meeting place, where, and, and I think it's in Fresno, the police station actually has some cameras set up, and they, I don't know how they advertised it, if there's signs, you know, transfer your personal property here. But, you know, and I'm not saying bring your sofa down here to, to wherever the cameras are to sell your sofa, and that's not what I'm suggesting. But I just want to share that if people are selling their items, for whatever reason, please be careful, and if there's any ideas that the city has to where we can help those transaction be safer. I know we, we hear that we should do it in a public place, you know, meet at a coffee shop or, or whatever. That's probably safer than your own home, but, you know, I shared with city staff the opportunity maybe to have a, a public place that's monitored, if you will, to bring a little bit more safety to the community. It's just something that I heard and thought I'd share. Tonight, I, I stopped coming into council chambers at the Mud Hut right around the corner, and I don't know how long they've been in town, but they make a great cup of coffee and a great Frappuccino, and I do have some dessert, and those of us that typically go in the back, there's some cupcakes back there, and I think there's some food left over.
You have to look for them, because they're in a bag.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're in the bag, so, you know, you just take the bag, and it's luck of the draw. I, I do care about the heat wave that's coming. We haven't really had time to acclimate ourselves, so I, I know we're staying hydrated, but just knowing the signs and symptoms of heat stress. I know that if I bend over and work for a long time, and it's over, you know, 95 degrees, and then I stand up, I get a little lightheaded, even if I drink a lot of water, and I don't have a bad heart. But the high heat is real, and heat exposure is real. You know, please continue to share the signs and symptoms of heat illness, and ways to prevent them through proper hydration and breaks and shade time. I really want to thank the city for their quick response to emails that come in from the public. A lot of times, we're all copied on it, sometimes just some of us are, and we forward it to city staff, but to hear tonight that we timely got back to a, a resident that was concerned about some homeless issue and an encampment is just great. I mean, our city takes action when we hear these things, and even from the podium as best we can. Shout out to Lori, Employee of the Month, she earned it. The flags, we had a phone call a couple of weeks ago about the flags around the community that are on public property, and I know we swap them out once a year, but if, if anybody that works for the city and any of us sees a flag that's in disrepair for whatever reason, please let's report it right away to the city so we can get it swapped out timely. And maybe one time a year isn't quite enough, maybe two times a year might be better, something to consider, a few hundred dollars to keep our flags looking good, I think is appropriate. I'd like to comment about the, the littering on Main Street that we all heard about. When I was coming into the councils, to this council meeting study session this afternoon, a little bit after 2:00, there was a, I saw a police officer on the shoulder over by Porterville Ford, and their lights were flashing, and it's two lanes, and as I approached, and I, I moved over into the number one lane, you know, furthest away from the curb, coming south on Main, and so did other drivers. And the officer was off to the side of the vehicle in a safe place, that if somebody didn't give that courtesy of clearance, and were to hit that car, the officer would have been safe, I, I believe. So I applaud that training and, and what I saw. And what else I saw was the ticket book out. And as I went by, I kind of looked over at this guy with his sunglasses on, kind of sitting there, you know, and I've had a ticket before, and I usually deserved it, I always did. But this, you know, the, the risk that we have as officers, and the way that they're trained to stay safe, I just really appreciate that. So I just wanted to share the, the appreciation, the thank you. But as, back to the littering, I know we only have so many resources, and I don't see anybody driving down the street throwing a empty Jack-in-the-Box bag out their window. When I grew up, it was a TV ad of somebody littering, and there was a Native American in headdress standing on the side of the road, and he looked at it and saw what America had come, become, which was a country of littering, and a little tear came down his eyes. And that still has an impression on me 50 years later, 55 years, okay, 60 years later. And, and, you know, I don't know what our, what our limit is, but I would expect, and I would feel that if I threw a bag out the window and a police officer saw me, if I get a ticket for $500, I probably deserved it. In a second offense, a thousand dollars, I don't know. And then these unattended junk piles, if we see them around the city, if we call the city, I don't know if we clean it up or what, but unattended junk piles, I don't want people putting their junk out on the street and just leaving it there, and then, you know, the city's got to clean it up, especially in residential neighborhoods, especially on Main Street. So I don't know how to fix all that. But if it stays out on the city sidewalk by a light pole for a couple of days, I'm sure, call to the city, as well as coming down to council chambers can help us get that fixed up. I'd like to thank ASM Transit for bidding into our proposal. They, they, I haven't seen the, the, the actual proposal, but they were selected tonight, and I just want to express some appreciation for that. And then the last thing is, I was coming up Henderson today. I'm trying to take more time. I don't know what the, the scheduled time is to, to quit. Rich wants me to keep going, somebody might, might want me to.
30 seconds to summarize.
30 seconds to summarize. The landscaping on, on Henderson is drought tolerant, and it always looks good. I don't know if we have trucks that go by with, with air that just blows out and dusts it off, but you can go from, from, you know, west of Newcombe all the way to the other, to the east side of the 65, and it just looks really sharp. And I compare that to, you know, the city of Phoenix, you drive around Phoenix, and their freeways, it's all rocks and designs and all of this stuff. And then I, I happened to look around, and I know we've, we've authorized some money for partnering with Caltrans to do litter abatement and stuff like that, but I'd like to see if there's some monies available somewhere to help Caltrans dress up our freeways, you know. We're going to put new signs, you know, coming into our city, new roads, you know, nice roads. We're going to build a library, it'd be nice if the 65 just really had a, a gleam to it. I appreciate city staff taking care of Henderson and all of our displays of, you know, nice landscaping around town. I know I took 45 seconds, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Meister.
Well, I, I want to congratulate, and, and really a huge shout out for Lori, Employee of the Month. You know, she's transitioned into this position so well, and she's, she's so good at what she does, and she's on top, and she keeps us on schedule, and I need that help personally. And so, congratulations to her, and, and look forward to what she could do in the, the future. Agenda item 11 tonight, really excited to see that go through. It shows the city adapting and overcome, overcoming hard times, right? And so we greatly appreciate that. I want to give a, a shout out to Captain Josh Manus, Manus, but the way it was spelled was Manus, but Manus. Josh, this is a comment that I got from a store owner downtown, and it's just so cool to get messages like this. So everyone downtown is very happy. His response to efforts are on point, no hesitation when there is a problem, shows up ASAP and in force. Thank you. You know, we, we got some, an item in closed session where Josh's name came up tonight. I don't know if I'm allowed to share that, but, once again, your efforts, and, and of course, you're going to give credit to supporting staff, I know that, Chief Castillo, but we, we greatly appreciate the customer service you're providing to our community, and it makes us look good, so thank you. I also attended the Memorial Day Celebration at Hillcrest Cemetery, 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 excuse me. Huge shout out to American Legion, they do just an amazing job, and, and Councilmember Beltran's right, you know, these are 70 years plus minus, but they're out there doing it. We set up just under 1,300 flags, and they're old casket flags. It's, it's really just an honor. I don't, I don't know how else to put it. There was a follow-up, and I, I brought it with the flagpole, I don't know if you noticed, I know you attended, Councilman. They got it to half-mask, and they had to tie it off because there was issues with the flagpole, and it's so old, and the flagpole's got a heavy lean. I reached out to our county supervisor, just trying to figure out jurisdiction, and the cemetery is actually their own jurisdiction, and, and so, really, I want to find a way to, to fix that flagpole for future events. We got a great county supervisor that is, is wanting to go to work on this. I'm excited to see what comes in the future with that as well. And, you know, we, we honored those who paid the ultimate sacrifice and service to our country, and I'd say there's no greater love for your family, for the people, to lay down your life for your country. These are the true guardians of liberty, and it was a great honor to, to be there during that event. Tonight, there was comments about posting a flag of the flag upside down, country in distress, and, and I was the person that posted it, not afraid. I am transparent. I, I feel our country is in distress. And I, I did get a like from a former mayor of Porterville, Ron Irish, and I, I read my comments, so it's on record. "It breaks my heart to see men like Steve Bannon, Peter Navarro, and Donald Trump fall under attack to political lawfare, while government gangsters look past Epstein Island, Hillary's emails, Obama's Crossfire Hurricane, Hunter's laptop, and the most corrupt president in U.S. history, Joe Biden, bought and paid, bought and paid for by countries around the world, 10% for the big guy. To see our judicial system weaponized is frightening. These actions resemble moves of Hitler, Stalin, and Mao." And I meant that. You could question my. You could question my patriotism, you could question my morals, I stand by it. And then I'll finish with, I want to thank Rico for putting together a opposition letter for AB 1955. This expressed the purpose is to prohibit schools, employees from disclosing any information related to pupils' gender identity, sexual orientation, or gender expression to any other person, including parents, without the people's consent unless required by law to protect the student's safety. And what I really, I am going to continue to push back is where the state is demonizing the parents in these moments, when the parents are the guardian of the child and care the most about the child, they're the ones that nourish and raise the child. And it just is frightening that the state would step in and try to make that separation. It really is. And so I call for a separation of state and schools. You know, we have a separation of state and church, I think we need a separation of state and schools. Obviously they're funded by the state, but I really am pushing back. So I had a opposition letter put together, thank you to staff. I have shared it with Councilman Beltran to see if he'd like to support this letter. I have a legal question. I don't think it's necessary to make it a city letter, but Councilman Wyrock has expressed wanting to support opposition letters like this in the past. Would there have to be a scheduled matter to have his support with Councilmember Beltran without violating the Browns Act?
Well, if it's just, if it's just two of you, no. If it's three of you, we'd have to look at whether it pertains to city business. So I'd, I'm not positive that it would or wouldn't.
And me disclosing it in other matters doesn't bypass the Browns Act now that it's like public information.
You're disclosing in other matters, I mean, if we're going to have three and we decide it does pertain to something that relates to the city, then it really should come to the city council. But if there's just two of you, then it doesn't, yeah, it would be a scheduled matter. You'd have to, it's like a proclamation or any kind of other support for anything city-related, right? If three of you sign onto it, you've got essentially city, you know, an action of city support, so. But all that being said, it really just depends on the situation, depends on what it says, it depends on whether or not we look at that as something that's a matter of city concern or if it's just something, if it's beyond city concern and it's not pertaining to the city.
I think it relates to the constituents of the city, but I don't believe it's a city matter as far as streets, sewage.
I'd look at it based on whatever the content of a letter itself is going to say. It's hard for me to just make a statement without, you know, it really is factually specific.
Gotcha. So I'll leave it at that. I, I don't think it's right to continue to try to push onto some of my colleagues that don't want to support bills like, I mean, opposition letters like this, so I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Just a couple of things on city business. First of all, the consent calendar, I was really pleased to see there was a lot of items, probably one of the largest consent calendars that I remember. And to me, when I read through them, I just thought, how much work this is, how much work is being done for us to be able to get all these approved, to move forward with that. So again, in addition to the other council members, I want to thank the staff because our two big things tonight were the budget and the critical infrastructure and with that, we still have this agenda packed with consent items to move forward on, so thank you all for that. I also want to congratulate the Tolu River Housing Authority on their new housing project. I know the mayor stated she wasn't able to attend and asked me if I could attend in her place. I was on a work travel and I could not attend at that time, but still a huge project to get housing for families on the reservation. I also want to mention again to, congratulations to all the graduates that are still being acknowledged. Congratulations to all of them. And then the last thing is just, please stay safe, you know, our community, but also the staff and all the work that you have to do during this time. And I agree, the heat wave is coming on pretty quickly and so I just would like everyone to remember to stay safe. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Who's responsible for that clock? Who is responsible for that clock? Oh, I'm just worried whose performance evaluation it's going to go on. Anyway, moving right along. Exactly, we've been trying to get, we've been, it's kind of warm in here. You know, there's been a lot of activity that has been going on in the community, a lot of events and we try to be at many places at all times and sometimes we cannot be in two places at once. On May 23rd, I attended the K-Tip ribbon cutting of their new 101.3, the Jamonolis. It was good to see Luisa Savala there and I will tell you, there were about 100 people that showed up for that event and they had people from representatives, different people just showing up, networking and having good conversation, but it was well attended. I'm glad that I was there. And our own military banner ceremony on May 24th, that was very well put together. It was done and Donnie, thank you once again for staff and the involvement. We did really good, didn't we? It was, it was well attended. Oh, and the Cal Mountain ribbon cutting, Councilmember Wyrock let me know that he was not able to attend because he wasn't feeling well. On May 31st, Jason, Patrice and I attended the retirement celebration for Don Sowers after so many years of working for PSW and he sent me correspondence this morning that he actually wanted me to share with council members. He said he wanted to thank us for coming to his send-off on Friday. It was a wonderful surprise to receive a certificate of recognition from the city. He has lived in Porterville for 39 years, raised four daughters, and have had a wonderful career working for Johnson's, Bank of Sierra, and PSW, and I am so proud to call Porterville my home. Please convey my gratitude to the city council. It was very well attended. Now, on June the 14th, the same day as the Flag Day Ceremony, I have asked Councilmember Meister to please read the proclamation on behalf of the city and please provide Councilmember Meister, I had a time, a copy of the proclamation and then you can make arrangements with him to pick it up. This is the first one I will be missing in all the years that I have been on council, but I will be attending the Sierra View Medical Center, their graduate medical education graduation ceremony for those who have completed the program. So I will be attending that event. And our homeless task force meeting originally scheduled for June the 19th was canceled. They tried to reschedule for the following week, but there's a busyness and nobody, so they just went ahead and canceled the meeting and we won't be meeting until July 17th. Moving right along, Patrice?
Yes, just a couple of things, Your Honor. Summer Night Lights actually kicks off this Friday with the first event being a free swim night beginning at 6:15 at the municipal pool, so that's exciting. The following Friday on the 14th, it will be a free movie night at Murray Park. The splash pad at Fallen Heroes Park also opens this weekend and it will be operational in addition to that tomorrow, I believe, from 3:00 to 5:30 and that is triggered by the forecasted temperatures. So that is actually considered a cooling area and so with the temperatures being forecasted so high this week, we will, we are tracking those and will be potentially activating our cooling centers. However, City Hall and the Transit Center and the library, those always serve during working hours and then should there be a need, we will be sending people to the armory, which would also be operational. So that's all I have this evening.
Okay, well, it's awfully warm in the council chambers this evening, just want to throw that out there. I want to give a big shout out before I say that the meeting, looking at the time, congratulations to the Porterville Exchange Club for their 65 years. I look forward to celebrating with them on June the 15th and with that being said, it is 7:52. Meeting is adjourned.